Okay, in the interest of our East Lansing community, I want to call our February 13th regular meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education order at 7:01 PM. Mrs. Holcor, would you help us with a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Chambers.
Present.
Dr. Edsel.
Here.
Ms. Fink.
Here.
Dr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Walton. Ms. Cormier. Ms. Ferris-Hyland.
Here.
Student Representative Gabe Benavides. Ms. Laco.
Here. Great, thank you. And I would just also note that trustee Cormier had previously announced her absence from the meeting tonight due to a long-known conflict. Next, we have the reading of the mission statement. Trustee Fink, would you read the mission statement, please?
Nurture each child, educating all students, building world citizens.
Thank you. Next, we move to the approval of the agenda. I would accept the motion related to item D, approval of the agenda.
Move the Board of Education approve the agenda of the February 13th, 2023 regular meeting as presented.
Second. It was moved by trustee Lyons, seconded by trustee Edsel. Is there any discussion? I would move to a vote. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? The result of the vote is unanimously approved. Next on the agenda is board leadership. At our last meeting, trustee Edsel stepped down from the president role pursuant to our bylaws, which I'll read in a minute here. "I immediately became president of the board." To quote our Board Policy 2405, titled "Board Officer Vacancies," if the office of president becomes vacant, the vice president will succeed to the office of president for the balance of that office's term. Understanding that responsibility now, I am willing to serve out this term. Just want to make that clear. But I also understand that in board policy, a majority of the board can also remove me from this office if they choose. So at this time, I would like to ask if anyone would want to put forward such a motion?
I would. I would move that the board remove Tara Trustee Chambers from the role of president.
Is there a second? The motion is not seconded, so we'll move on to the next item, which relates to a letter that I received from trustee Walton earlier this afternoon, and I'll read that letter now publicly. "Dear Dr. Chambers, this letter serves as my resignation from the East Lansing Board of Education for personal reasons effective immediately. I am grateful for having had the opportunity to serve in this capacity and offer my best wishes to you and the board for continued success. Sincerely, Debbie Walton." And she later emailed that letter to the full board and copied the superintendent. So now, according to our bylaws, specifically Policy 2404B, we have 30 calendar days to fill this vacancy. Although we just received this notification today, I've already spoken with Superintendent Laco to at least start the process of preparing information to release to the community to seek applications for this vacancy on the board. We don't really have that much time to waste, so this information, which we will distribute widely, will be released in the next few days. I just also want to say publicly, and I think I speak for the board when I do so, to say how much we've appreciated trustee Walton's voice on this board and as her service as a representative of our community. And I just feel like before we move on to other important issues, would any board members want to make additional comments?
Yeah, I would just like to give my appreciation for trustee Walton and her voice that was on the board and just my appreciation. She was a great member for the board and a great loss to have right now.
I agree. I think a real bright spot this past month in my, as a newly-appointed board member, was getting to know Debbie a bit better, and I really did appreciate her service and her voice. So I'd like to also publicly thank her.
I second and third all of that. I appreciated Debbie's voice on the board, and I know she's going to continue on to serve this district in all sorts of other capacities. Sorry. And I just, I wish her the best. Sorry.
Okay. We have a few other issues related to board leadership. Trustee Walton served as our treasurer, and then we also have the vice presidency position to fill. I've been reading up on our policies and bylaws. So Policy 2405, titled "Board Officers," gives us the responsibility of electing a new vice president as a board. When it comes to the office of treasurer, we can either elect a person to fill that role, or I have the power to appoint someone to that position. But I'd like to ask that we elect someone to these positions. And so I think we'd start with the position of vice president. Does someone have someone, a name to put forward as nomination?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Dr. Elizabeth Lyons as vice president.
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Ferris-Hyland and seconded by trustee Edsel. Is there any discussion?
Want to think about that?
I'll accept the nomination, and if I'm over it, then I'll take on that responsibility.
Okay, noted. Any additional discussion?
I think for me, it's going to have to be a no, knowing that you had intergovernmental committee all last year and didn't do anything, so no.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I just couldn't hear you.
I said for me, it is going to be no, since you had intergovernmental committee last year and did not do anything with it. So no for vice president for me.
Okay, well, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of trustee Lyons serving as vice president, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was, the motion passes. Thank you, trustee Lyons, for serving in this capacity. I do believe you were serving as secretary, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to add the secretary position to our conversation this evening. Is there a motion to nominate someone to serve in the position of secretary?
I will nominate Tally Ferris-Hyland as the secretary of the board.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Are you willing to serve in that?
I'm willing to serve in that role. Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor to have trustee Ferris-Hyland serve in the role of secretary, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, next, we have to deal with treasurer. I would accept a motion related to a member of the board to serve in this position, please.
I'll motion Kath. We've done it before, so I would like to ask if you would be willing to do it again.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was moved by trustee Lyons, seconded by trustee Ferris-Hyland. Is there any discussion on this motion?
For me, because of my asking for you to step down as president, it's going to be a no.
Then I will call the question. All in favor of Kath Edsel serving the position of treasurer, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
No.
The motion carries. I didn't ask you if you're willing to serve.
She did.
Oh, she did, okay. Thank you. And in case I didn't say, that secretary position was moved by trustee Edsel, seconded by myself, and did pass. Okay, well, we have that taken care of. I want to thank everybody for your willingness to help serve in these important leadership positions. Next, we move to item F, approval of minutes. Would some, oh, go ahead. Yep.
I move the Board of Education.
No, I can.
Is it working?
Just one moment, as we have a technical delay.
I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the following meetings. One, January 23rd, 2023, regular meeting. Two, January 30th, 2023, special meeting. And the third one, February 7th, 2023, special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was moved by trustee Lyons and seconded by trustee Edsel. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to the question. All in favor of the minutes of those three meetings, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we move on to recognition. Trustee Walton did before she, in the conversation we had this afternoon, she did provide some items for recognition. I also sent an email quickly to the board earlier today, but I would just say if anyone is interested in serving in the capacity of reading recognition, please just send me an email and let me know. But we'll move to recognition, and I appreciate trustee Lyons for taking care of that this evening until we find someone who's willing to do it permanently.
So, so the Science Olympia team wins Haslett Invitational. So on January 29th, the ELHS, East Lansing High School, competed at the Haslett Invitational SOC tournament, matching up against 34 high schools, having 58 teams from Michigan and Ohio. The main team got first place overall and medaled in 20 of the 23 events, showing its depth of talent across the many academic subjects tested, which included astronomy, multiple biology disciplines, chemistry, geological sciences, multiple physical science subjects, and engineering. They did this even though they were lacking one of the main team members, and other valuable main team members could not compete because of illness on the day. The team's ability to adapt and adjust to unfavorable circumstances was outstanding. They simply would not be denied by unexpected hurdles. In total, 34 East Lansing High School students competed as part of the three teams the SOC took to the tournament. They garnered so many individual great results, there are just too many to list here. I've, let's see, so this is what trustee Walton says. "I've always been impressed with the love of learning shown by East Lansing High School students of the SOC, and although I have interacted with them often, I still see new examples. One happened tonight on the gym floor, sometime after they came together to raise the trophy and have their team photo taken. It wasn't the sheer youthful joy in winning, because I've seen that before, and although it was wonderful again tonight, it was instead that they did it for the next 15 minutes, long after all of the other teams had left, and the volunteer cleanup crew was just about done picking up. It was when President Flynn handed back the exams to the members, and they huddled in groups to pour over their exams with their event partners, groaning about questions they missed and laughing at how they guessed correctly on others, or feeling wrong that one of their correct answers was not given credit. These are serious learners. The team wants to thank the dedicated teachers and administrators of East Lansing High School for giving them the chance to learn and build a culture of scholarly excellence over nine years of the SOC's existence. The six volunteer coaches continue to help so, so much. Bob Miller, Brian Trumbo, Turnbull, Dave Weisner, James Barger, all who helped at events at the tournament, too. Ashley Allen and Will Paddock, the parents who brought in the delicious selections of food, were terrific, too. We also would like to thank the anonymous donor whose generous funding will support the SOC for years to come. The team will bring in a big trophy to display on Monday, and all that clanking you hear in the hallways will be from the many medals worn by the team members." Let's see, so then the American Mathematics Competition for Mr. Burgess. "We would like to congratulate Peter Allen and John Bonnell and Skylar Hamlin for their success in the American Mathematics Competition this year. They scored in the top 5% of all students nationally in the competition, and now have qualified to represent East Lansing on the American Invitational Mathematics Examination." So great job to all of you. And the Math Counts Competition, congratulations to the McDonnell Middle School students who completed, or competed against a total of 70 students in the Regional Math Counts Competition at MSU on Friday. Elizabeth A., Joe B., Dominic B., Nardos F., Eleanor H., Grace J., Annie M., Lila, or Leila, sorry, and Elijah O. and Peyton V. Our team consisting of Elizabeth, Elijah, Joe, and Annie placed fourth in the region. A total of six MMS students qualified to compete in the countdown round, Annie, Dominic, Elizabeth, Elijah, Joe, and Nardos. Overall, Elizabeth placed fourth individually and third in the countdown round. Elijah placed fifth individually, and Joe placed ninth individually. Elizabeth and Elijah qualified to advance to the state competition in March. So kudos to these students and their hard work preparing for this competition and for representing McDonnell Middle School so well. Congratulations to all.
Any other items for recognition from board members or administrators?
I have one comment and one addition. I have, having served on the school board for a number of years, the recognition portion of our, of our meeting has varied. Sometimes it's all about, you know, certain academics or athletics, or this or the other. And I'm just, I'm sort of reaching out to say, if there are other things that you know of a student who needs to get recognized, please send that to the school board contacts, because there are a lot of other accomplishments in our school district that don't necessarily get the spotlight that, that other ones do. Having said that, last, two weeks ago at this meeting, a parent came forth and spoke about their child completing Grad Alliance in a very short period of time. And I thought, well, they completed the year. But I reached a little deeper, and as it turned out, that in under a year, that student had completed all four years of the Grad Alliance curriculum in less than a year. And that student's name is Carmelo Mackey, and I just wanted to recognize Carmelo for his accomplishments.
Thank you. Are there other items for recognition? The next we'll turn to the student representative report. I think I saw Gabe Benavides back there. Yes. If you would come forward, sir, and we would love to hear from you.
My name is Gabe Benavides. I'm the student representative here. And I'd just like to speak about what's been happening, going on from my perspective. About three, three weeks ago, last, three Mondays ago, there was a big board meeting after what occurred, after the DuWitt basketball game. And it was, it was shocking, because my whole life going to East Lansing, I've been proud to go here. Everywhere I go, if I tell someone I go to East Lansing, it's, it's held to a higher standard. And for that week or two, when I would go to work, or basketball, or my barber shop, or wherever, they'd ask me, what's, what's going on in East Lansing? What's happening at East Lansing? East Lansing has this high standard. And that was concern to me, concerning to me, because this is my home. This is where I grew up, and I have no intention on going anywhere. And this is where my sister growing up, is growing up. And I'd like to thank the board for reacting to the public's concerns of, of what's been going on. But every decision that's been made has been short-term. It's all been reactive. And last board meeting, there was a lot of concerns about why these things are going on, and yeah, why, why is this happening? What is the root of the problem? And I think that's what we need to attack. Because right now, for the past week, school's been going normal. Like, I feel fine at school. From my perspective, I can focus on my studies now. But what happens if this happens again, and why is it happening? That's the problem we need to attack, so this doesn't happen in the future. And yeah, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Gabe. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Laco, I'll turn the floor over to you.
I just have two items tonight to share. One is a reminder that next Thursday, February 23rd, is our kindergarten information night, where we begin to share information to welcome our Fall 2023 kindergarten and young five students. The information night will be held at McDonnell Middle School from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and again, that is next Thursday, February 23rd. Later in the spring, we'll hold a kindergarten roundup event at each of the individual buildings. And the information night next week is for any prospective families, both resident or non-resident families. And the second item I have, oh, could have been tied in with recognition, but I would just want to recognize our high school Canines for Change handler, Jen Jackheck, along with her pup Gus, because they passed their facility dog certification test last Thursday, and they're the first pair handler and pup that we have in the district that are now official certified facility dogs. Our other pups will take their test later this spring, but I know that we have a local news channel coming out later this week to do a little story on it for part of the school's rule segment on our local news station. So you can watch for a little more information about our program and their accomplishments later this week. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. As a reminder, there is no discussion on consent agenda items, so we offer a motion, wait for a second, and then move directly to a board vote. That said, would someone be interested in offering a motion related to the one consent agenda item this evening?
I'll move the Board of Education approves the consent agenda to include the following item, hiring of Kimberly Cash, 1.0 FTE, third-grade teacher at Glen Karen at MA Step 9, effective February 14th, 2023.
Second.
It was moved by Dr. Edsel, seconded by Dr. Lyons. Is there, oh, no discussion. That reminder is to myself, by the way, that we don't have discussion. We'll move to the vote. All in favor of the consent agenda item, please indicate your preference by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We next move to public comment. I'll read the statement that we generally read during this portion of the meeting in just a moment, but I did want to also say a few things about, to clarify for the community what the purpose of public comment is. Public comment is, public comment is the people's time. It's widely accepted practice, not just for the East Lansing Board of Education, but for many elected bodies, to allow the public uninterrupted time to share your thoughts, your concerns, your accolades, maybe. As your elected school board members, our responsibility during this time is to listen to you. The only interruption will occur when your time has expired, at which time I'll respectfully ask you to finish your statement and then to leave the microphone. We are aware that some are disappointed, that we do not respond right away to comments made during public comment, that there is no back-and-forth conversation. We understand that, and there are many times where we are frustrated as well, not to be able to engage in a conversation. However, I would remind us all that public comment is not your only opportunity to address the board. Our email addresses are publicly available, and I know many of us are also open to phone calls and other synchronous communication, well, as our time allows. It is also common for us to follow up with individuals, to give public comment when we can, to clarify next steps or provide a response. With that, I'll read our official statement, which is that, "This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes, after all persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed additional time. The superintendent or other, other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings." Okay, the little blue form box is in the back of the room, so this will, I'll remind you a few times, but if you're interested in giving public comment, you can do so, and just make sure that Kelly's checking the box, but also you just get it to Kelly. Okay, the first item I have tonight is on the topic of accessibility and special ed services. Mabel Minadier Thomas. Next on deck would be Brandy Branson.
Hi, I'm Mabel. This is my daughter Caroline. She's an East Lansing student at Wilson Talent Center in the transition program, finished high school in 2020, COVID graduation. I didn't come here to talk about the door out there, but that's my first concern, is that the accessible door is locked at the night entrance. This has been an ongoing concern of mine since Caroline was in middle school, but I'll tell you the reason I'm here, and then I'm going to get back to that. I went to, I was watching from home the last couple of board meetings, and I wanted to use closed caption, and there was no ability for a public school, for a public meeting to not have closed captions in 2023. All right, back to the doors. When she was in middle school, Caroline was in choir. She had two years in the middle school. She was the last class that was only seven, eight. Four concerts, fall and spring, for two years, and every concert, the accessible door is locked. I'm not trying to bring up old stuff, but there's a history here, and that's why I'm here. Like, the closed captioning lack of, to me, was the cherry on top, and I'm not sure what you call tonight, with the door being unlocked here. It's unacceptable, and we live in East Lansing. It just, it just baffles me. There needs to be somebody that looks at big picture of accessibility. When they did the facelift at the middle school, the, the button, whatever you want to call that, for access, for the accessible door, she had to drive into the wood chips to access it. And it took way too many emails with the special ed director to get that one taken care of, right? When she was in, a freshman, you know, you just did the recognitions and the honors for people. When she was a freshman, I asked the special ed director for something after school for special needs students, and I was told she can join any club, which she can't. She's on a different level intellectually, her social development is different, she's hearing impaired, and her level of hearing is three feet from one person, right? Add a club or a group, and what's her hearing level? And I tried to convince that person that she can't be in any club. There was nothing for her, and I think everybody sitting at this table knows the importance of after-school activities for students, right? There's a lot of research out on that. Right? When she was in 10th grade, I met with a consultant, and they said, let me have her IEP. And I was doing that for safety concerns for where the basic classroom is, and there was no plan to get her out of the building if that ramp wasn't accessible. And it took a federal mediator to travel here from Cleveland to address that problem. Anyway, back to where I was, right? So this person asked for IEP, looks Caroline in the eye and says, do you have closed captioning in your classroom? And she said, no. My jaw dropped. I live in East Lansing. She's in 10th grade, so from, from probably fifth grade on, maybe seventh, not sure about that. Closed captioning was in her IEP. I didn't put it there. Her team put it there, and her team said to me, you should do this at home. I said, okay, I got used to it, and now I love it. But the school put closed captioning in her IEP, and it was 10th grade, and there had been no closed captioning. And when I asked the special ed director, the response was, we do not have the technology. It took me to file a state complaint to get East Lansing to provide the technology, and she's not the only student that needs closed captioning. You all know that. It's baffling to me, the idiotic fights that I have had over the years with this district for things that, to me, seem like common sense, right? So she's in school, she's participating in Michigan Victory Games. It's like Special Olympics. She did that in middle school, high school, still does it. One of the officials says, oh, there's this thing called Unified Sports. I said, wow, he explained this to me? I said, it's really cool. Gen ed students, special ed students, her teammates. Gen ed students, special ed students are teammates. Nobody's helping each other out. They're on teams together. Her bestie goes to Howell and did pom-poms for four years. Great experience. Howell has... is that my five?
That's your time, so I'll just ask you to finish your statement.
All right. Howell has four Unified Sports programs. And I asked the school here to provide something. Four years, my extrovert got to bowl twice with Haslam. That was all you provided, for four years. That was all I can get out of you, all right? I think it's time to step up to the plate and provide something for special ed students.
Thank you so much. Next is Brandy Branson on the topic of discipline process, appeals process, process for... I'm not sure.
Administration. I'm pretty sure is what it says, but I'll hit all of those. Just because in your opening, I'm Brandy, opening statement, I'm not sure of when we will get a response. I'm hoping that by the next board meeting, I will have some sort of response from the board on my questions as it relates to my topics. So first, my son was suspended, I want to say, two weeks ago. He was suspended and accused of fighting. Was on one of your charts that I would like that corrected, but accused of fighting. So what I'm learning is that the kids here are suspended, and they're found guilty before anything else happens, which is a problem. But he was found guilty of fighting. And when I brought forth the evidence after he had been suspended for five, at that point, I believe, five or six days, brought forth the evidence, they decided they would change the reason that he was suspended. Which, to me, if you think about a court of law, you charged him with assault. And when his defense attorney brought the evidence, it did not support your charge. Therefore, all charges should be dropped. That's commonplace. So there's no appeals process, I found out. That is a problem, because if we're going to accuse children of anything and suspend them and stop them from learning, they're getting their education that they're allowed constitutionally, we should have an appeals process. So that's one of my issues. I want to understand also what's the plan of action once we've suspended these children to getting caught up on their education. He's with a group of students that I think was on the emergency plan. I don't know if they're coming back. I think we said we got rid of six kids. I don't even honestly know. I don't remember at this point. But when you suspend children, what is the plan to bring them back and get them caught up? I had a meeting, and I was told that he could have gotten on Google Classrooms only to find out in the policy that's not accurate. I can't, I wasn't told until that day. And at that point, he'd been suspended for seven or eight, seven and a half days that I could have picked up homework for him. Well, this is not his first suspension, so I'm just now hearing this. So really, what is the plan? What are we providing for students when we remove them from an educational environment to even get caught up or to try and maintain some sort of, I don't know, process? Keep their grades up, especially when it's in investigatory stages? Also during this time, so I also want to know, is there a process for investigation, right? What is the process when we send students out to get their education that they're entitled to? And what do we do to bring them back and re-acclimate them to our schools so that they're not being harassed? The other issue that came up, and I'm, I don't know, I didn't respond, obviously, but Facebook is a public forum, okay? And there is a parent group on Facebook that decided that they would slander my son. Took all I could not to respond to the mother that thought it was appropriate to slander my son in multiple instances, as well as East Lansing. Thank you, Ms. Lako, for your response to a parent that wrote to you in regards to the slander that did occur. But in that, she stated that a school employee provided her with confidential information on my son. And I want to know what investigation is going to occur? What are the steps that are going to happen? And she repeated it multiple times. I'd be more than happy, I mean, I guess Facebook is public forum. I could put her name out there because it was not appropriate. And it, and they began a witch hunt. So multiple parents decided that they would take the opportunity to slander my son. Defamation of character, he's a child, and they thought it was appropriate. Not only that, they started their hate bashing for East Lansing High School and putting out false information, which, again, is a problem. And I understand people are entitled to say what they want. But when they go back and say a school employee can verify that, I need to know what investigation is going to happen there and what are the steps that are taken? Because there was some information provided that only a school employee would have in regards to his, his personal case. So that's problematic. So I guess what I'm looking for is what is your investigation plan for my, for the kids? What is the appeals process? Because I want to appeal the decision. He should not have been suspended. And if they were going, if they were going to suspend him, they should have blanketed a term versus saying assault. And when he's proven innocent, then they still want to say, "We're suspending him, and you have no appeals rights." I was told that. He has no appeal rights. It's not in your policy. There's nothing. And I've gone through the school policy. I see nothing as it relates to appeals rights for children. So that needs to be updated, because even in a court of law, you have appeals. And if you're going to treat them like they're criminals, then we need to go ahead and have an appeals rights. I know that was my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Cherie Brooks, speaking about school safety. And then next would be the Martin family.
Ms. Brooks, please. Excuse me, I am Cherie Brooks. I had the pleasure of coming for you all on, I think it was January 30th. And during that time, I've, from January 30th to now, I extended the invitation for, you know, people to come and see me. Come talk to me, because my child was identified as one of the students in these two groups that have been fighting. I am solution oriented. I don't, I don't have a lot of time for, you know, the bashing and the going back and forth. So in this, in this, in this time, when you see me today, I'm not standing here singularly. I represent a community, a collaboration of parents who haven't had, who don't have, who don't have access to this, this audience in this moment. There were, we have three asks. The first ask is for this board agenda to be revised. We just would like the board agenda to be revised to reflect or report a response to public comment. We're clear that the board discussion may cover or address or reframe statements provided during public comment. However, this often does not build in accountability or action items that the community can track nor support. If you revise the agenda to reflect a response to public comment, you give both yourselves and the community an opportunity to be reflective, to level set expectations, and to demonstrate active listening while creating a safe space for collaboration and accountability. We're not interested in sitting here, year after year, meeting after meeting, while the decline of our students' experiences are being tracked in national polls. We are here, we are committed, and we want to work with you. So help us, help you, help us. The second ask is that collaboration is given strong consideration. What we would like is a definition. We want to know what collaboration with the Trojan family looks like. There are times when collaboration is demonstrated amongst the administration, but that demonstration also looks like collusion. We don't have an, we don't, we're not, we're not a part of that. So that private, the private collaboration that they do and the public demonstration also shows a little bit of culpability. And we're not okay with that. If we are very clear on when we are to join in, not only with the discussions, but with activism and support, the academic and social environment will be less murky and more equitable. I'm just going to restate that we are here. We are committed, and we want to work with you. So help us, help you, help us. Lastly, we're asking for transparency. You encourage us to track your progress. We would ask that you report publicly, building by building, academic and achievement plans for success. We ask that you publicly, building by building, report on civil rights data. You have that, you have that, that option in that, in your district annual education report. I looked back, and it's not labeled for years. So you know that it's available. You guys are just not doing it. We ask that you publicly report, building by building, what enrichment activities and plans for success look like. We just had a parent here who says she's been asking for this. Report it so we can figure out how to help you. We expect you all to assist us in the journey. We are not small thinkers, and we don't expect you all to have all the answers. It's, we want to collaborate with you all. So during these meetings, we would like to see what's going on inside the schools. This cloak of invisibility opens us all up to failure. The high school isn't successful if the middle school sucks. The middle school can't be successful if there are gaps in academic and social interaction before immersion. The elementary school experience should include opportunities for our babies to see their future and their legacy. You had a math teacher share that experience. Give us the data that demonstrates the beautiful and ugly truths in these, in these buildings. Because we are here, we are committed, and we want to help you. We want to work with you. So help us, help you, help us. That's my time.
Thank you. Next, we have the Martins, Martin family, speaking on our family's perspective. And then next is Kaitlyn Thomas, followed by Nicole Martin.
So I tried to test myself several times. So if I get there, it's like three sentences if the bell rings, I promise. So today, I've returned to convey my family's experiences with bullying and mental health. Get through it, Nicole. All right. Our kids spend approximately 34 hours a week in their respective district buildings and struggle each day with wondering what the next thing they're going to have to deal with is while they're at school. How do they focus in school when they're worried about each other's safety? Taylor is a 17, holy God, breathe, Nicole. Taylor is a 14-year-old ninth grader, cis ident, cis female with a strong Portuguese heritage. She has a previous, she has a previous, been previously a Little Ninjas instructor and is testing for her second degree black belt on Saturday. Thanks, Tristan. She coaches at Spartan Ninja Warrior 10 days a week, or 10 hours a week, has volleyball, speed and agility training outside of the school season. She works on a production team for both the adult and children's ministries at our church. And she has a relentless passion for wanting to be helpful. For Taylor, bullying began in eighth grade and included, but was not limited to being kicked out of lunch groups, being made fun of for how she dressed and her facial features. It escalated to unwarranted harsh words that when she spoke up in a group and they didn't agree with her, it followed by kicking her out of group chats, only to put her back in those group chats, to then FaceTime those groups, to then berate her in front of her friends, to then hang up on her, and then kick her back out of the chat. This year, she has been humiliated on the bus, in class, at volleyball, on social media, and in group chats. As, as her parents, we have provided her with endless supplies of try this and what about that's. After a year and a half of providing guidance to Taylor on how to navigate teenage drama, all of our efforts failed when last week she was slapped in the face during school. I would argue that physically assaulting someone is more extensive than merely teenage drama. Tristan is a, Tristan is a 10-year-old cis Portuguese female with short blue hair who identifies as an American Ninja Warrior with dyslexia. She's a black belt in karate, helps at Spartan Ninja Warrior, plays basketball, and is ranked in this, nationally ranked in the sport of ninja. She completes an hour of tutoring for dyslexia four times a week prior to the start of her school day. Some students, sometimes she attends speed and agility trainings at 6:00 a.m. prior to going to tutoring. We are incredibly thankful for the current solid group of friends, both boys and girls, teachers and support staff at Donley Elementary. Because for as long as they have known her, they have been able to see that Tristan, see Tristan as one of those who will always be authentically herself. As a family, we are overwhelmed with the idea that middle school is going to be atrocious for her. Bullying for Tristan has looked like being questioned by students as to why she's in the girls' bathroom and being questioned by a janitor when she's here at the high school using the bathroom during a game. While recently, on her safety post, a classmate yelled, "Shut up, Tristan, you look like a boy," when she was asking peers to stop fighting on their way to the bus. She has experienced, both being made, she has been, she has experienced being made fun of for a celebration routine she and a teammate have after practices and games. However, the highlight of our family's year was the substitute teacher, who not only called Tristan a boy in front of the class once, but twice in the same day. And when she had the courage to stand up and acknowledge that she was a girl, the substitute asked Tristan for her name as though her name would provide better proof that she was a girl. Due to an extremely rare allergy, I promise I will read faster, okay? Due to an extremely rare allergy, our family does not do a lot of large district events. This past fall, we were at the football game in which the chaos of the gun and the backpack erupted about, around concessions. Tristan had the privilege of being with me as the student ran back and forth behind us and people verbally stated, "He has a gun." This led, this event led to regression of Tristan no longer wanting to be alone. Since October, we, she has struggled every night to go to bed on her own. I promise I'm done. There's like four sentences. A task math, a task that had been mastered several years ago. Much like Senior Nick Chenault said in a previous meeting, he's concerned about his younger sister. And Tristan is constantly worried about Taylor, where she is and her safety.
Ms. Martin, I need to ask you to finish your statement and your sentence.
My sentence? Can I make it one sentence? Okay. "We don't care if students are suspended for 10 days or not at all. We want to know what is being done to help our students prior to the events happening, comma, until the community, including the school board members and administration, truly recognize that equity, diversity, restorative justice, and mental health are not check, checkbox items to address, but continuously, continuous areas that must be monitored and maintained to be successful. This district will continue to fail all students."
Thank you. Next, we have Kaitlyn Thomas, speaking about a student equity issue, SOC continuation. And then next is Mental Health Advisory Committee, Nicole Martin.
Good evening. My name's Kaitlyn Thomas. I'm a resource teacher at McDonald Middle School and a parent to two elementary students in the district. I'm here today to show support for a family and a student that I care deeply about. I want to begin by ensuring that the board and administration are aware that I have been given permission from this student and his family to make this statement and share the information to come. The past few weeks have been challenging for this community, to say the least. I want to address the rhetoric surrounding safety in East Lansing public schools that continues to spread like wildfire in our community and throughout the media. This is not to diminish the experiences of any student, staff member, parent guardian, family, or community member, because those are all valid and should be seen as so. But so too is the experience of my student. His experience now includes loss of community. We did that. When I say "we," I mean that we did that, all of us. Because instead of coming to the table to discuss equitable ways to prioritize safety, we've thrown equity out the door and decided everything must be equal to be fair. We've already started to make reactive changes to enforce practices equally, forgetting that we pride ourselves... that we pride ourselves in leading a future focused on equity and nurturing all of our kids. Last week, I received a phone call from a parent informing me that administration declined to approve a continuation of enrollment for one of her kids, one of my students. I had conversations with building administration, I emailed Superintendent Laco, and I spent the week in a state of undeniable sadness and anger. Selfishly, these feelings exist because I've been coping with the loss of, the loss of a kid in my community that I love like one of my own, and the feeling of shame that comes when you fail at something. My efforts to advocate for him fell flat. My student became the example that this administration would make as a result of this widespread rhetoric happening and the pressure that they and this board are facing from the community. It's my understanding that the district now has decided to implement a hard line on approving school of choice applications and continuations for students who have suspensions that may have been assaultive in nature. This hasn't always been the case, even as recently as last school year. I want the board to hear firsthand the impacts that equal application without an equity lens and consideration of individual circumstances has on our students, staff, and our families. A recent article published by East Lansing Info quotes Professor Glenn Studzki, who specializes in school violence, safety, bullying for the social work department at MSU. He cites a study focused on males who had incidents of violence in school. The study results demonstrated that levels of aggression diminished when the males had an adult who took an interest in them. I've seen this connection over the years, as much of my experience has been spent supporting students with emotional and behavioral disabilities. Last year was a hard year for my student and his family. Their experience and my ten-year-old student's response to trauma and grief became the reason that this administration decided he couldn't stay. Let us not forget that behavior is communication, regardless of whether it's positive or negative behavior. We need to be listening and responding in a way that supports our values as an East Lansing Public School community. The team at McDonald Middle School added increased levels of individual support for this student. I spent half of my school day working with him. Staff started attending his basketball games on the weekends. We shared lunch together on Fridays, and I intentionally worked to build my connection with his family. These efforts resulted in increased in regular attendance, decreased tardiness, improved grades and academic growth, and reduced behavioral incidents and referrals. We chose to ignore individual growth and instead close the doors of our community based on fear of the future. Investment in every student matters, and much like Professor Studzki shared, when stakeholders show a genuine interest in students who may be struggling, the resulting mentorship can be impactful and course-changing. When students engage in negative behaviors, they are communicating a need. It is our responsibility to respond with compassion and support. To be clear, we are not equipped as a staff to support all of the individual needs of our students. In my role, I'm afforded a smaller class size and caseload. I have the privilege of increased opportunities to focus on individual relationships with students and families, and that makes a difference. But individual growth must be considered and weighed considerably if we are to nurture every child. To wrap this up, I want to add to your already long list of solutions, particularly emphasizing positive practices rather than potentially punitive and inequitable ones. The district should allocate funds to hire a board-certified behavior analyst to serve as district-wide behavioral consultant and specialist. Behavior analysis utilizes evidence-based research to support multi-tiered interventions for improving student behavior. An important consideration in this is that the need appears to be dire and each level functions much differently. Having a behavioral specialist team with a staff member for elementary, middle, and high school would offer a more timely implementation for our students and lead to improved student outcomes and staff experience. Work alongside all stakeholders and use an equity framework when determining decisions surrounding school of choice and continuation of student enrollment. Individual circumstances must be considered to ensure equitable application of district Increased levels of support across district buildings. At the middle school, we need evidence-based Tier One and Tier Two PBIS systems to be developed and implemented with fidelity. Do I have one second to finish?
Or you can send us the rest of your statement, too.
Okay, I'll just read my last couple sentences. I hope that you don't take this as a dismissal of safety concerns. Instead, I hope that you hear this and take pause in the haste to implement change. The blanket application of policies targeted at extinguishing problems throughout the district fails to take equity and individual experience and circumstance into consideration. Fear-driven decision-making will come at the expense of our students and their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Martin, speaking about the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
I actually thought there was going to be more public comments, so this is going to come a lot later, but, um, optics are always so important, aren't they? How we look, what we offer, what we provide, have we provided every opportunity possible to our children? What do the decisions, events, or outcomes say about us? I will admit to the community that I was complacent in believing that the district addressed the issues back in October. And that complacency was rooted in the work that I thought I had done as a school board member here in East Lansing. As a school board member, the members of the Mental Health Advisory Committee welcome the opportunity to spend endless hours of development, collaboration, and implementation of program recommendations as part of their job as a Mental Health Advisory Committee. If you've ever gotten a group of people in mental health together, it is like an endless circle of open questions. It is tedious and it is hard work. The Mental Health Advisory Committee, um, board policies or bylaws state that the committee is there to, and I paraphrase, review district programming to address student social, emotional learning, to make recommendations to the board for preventative mental health programming. The rest of these are kind of like out-of-sink bullet points because I couldn't get my stuff together, so just bear with me. The Mental Health Advisory Committee on the school, on the district website, uh, reports its committee members from the, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, uh, school year. That might want to be updated. In December of two thousand twenty, a decision was made by the administration, and I'm quoting from minutes, that there were a couple of transitions happening due to the growth of the committee, um, that the growth of the committee and that has been seen in the district by the district leader, and that the district leader would be taking leadership of the committee. That conflicts with the intent and the bylaws of the Mental Health Advisory Committee. Imagine my surprise that when I investigated the district website, I found that prior to December first, two thousand twenty-two, the Mental Health Advisory Committee had not met since the previous March. Imagine my surprise when I found out that the, the Mental Health Advisory Committee had been reduced to a meeting where once or twice a year, we're going to collaborate if we need to. Why do we only have meeting minutes going back to September of two thousand twenty-one? We've had a full board in existence or committee in existence since two thousand seventeen. On January twenty-third of this year, amongst all of the chaos, it is my understanding that an email went out to the Mental Health Advisory Committee that they would continue on with having a meeting in March. Our district was on fire, and here for us, it was business as usual. Additionally, I believe that board policies had been put in place regarding student wellness and suicide prevention. The way they look now is not what I remember. The student wellness policy, ironically, up here today, so interested in that, uh, has no mention of mental health in it anymore, as though we never mentioned it and it never existed in, in board policy. And while the district's safety plan, uh, that went out two weeks ago, um, was great start, I recognize it was a draft, there was n, never a mention of mental health advisory getting involved until five days ago. I do want to say I recognize that the board has since met or that committee had met on the sixth. However, in here, they talk about funding, they talk about mental health fairs, they talk about Mental Health Week. These are not new. These are not new things. We were talking about these in two thousand seventeen. There used to be a link on the district website that was titled Trojan Mental Health Matters, up until a couple of days ago, and that link had nothing on it. It advised you back to the board. And advisors would go there and it would take you somewhere else on the website. And true to form, I checked today and that link is no longer on the website. It's gone. As if you never knew it was there in the first place, you would have never known that the link was broken or it was missing. Because now it appears that everything is back to business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next, I have Brad Lutz, speaking about communications and timelines. Brad Lutz, followed by Yasmina Burawi.
Hello, my name's Brad Lutz. I have a student here at the high school to McDonald Middle School, and I want to address communication. I brought it up at the emergency meeting and said, "Perception is reality." This is an email I received from the ELPS Bright Arrow System. Student transportation info for East Lansing Public Schools. Dear East Lansing families, attached to this email, you will find a score report for one of two AmesWeb screeners. Four emails titled that way. The school district needs to hire a communications director. You're not equipped, you don't have the policies, the procedures to communicate appropriately with the public. If you want us to trust you, you have to do this. We want to trust you, we want to work with you, but if you can't get the little things right? These are from my kids at McDonald Middle School. They walk. We don't even qualify for transportation. And that's what it's titled, so I'm confused to begin with. And then it's about AmesWeb. Then I get four more emails about something that wasn't appropriately attached to these, never referencing the fact that it had the wrong title in the first place. We want to trust you, but you have to communicate clearly and accurately. And if you can't do it on the small things, we're not going to trust you on the big things. And that was a resounding outcome of your survey. Parents don't want cell phones banned because they don't trust you to get us the information. That's the reality. You have to work within that reality and you have to address it as the board and as the administration. The second thing I'd like to address is timelines. Well, the district plan is wonderful and we are starting to address some things, there's no deadlines on it. Ti, you know, if we don't put deadlines on things, they're just dreams, they're not realities. There's nothing, we've addressed high school issues. What's the timeline for addressing the middle school and the elementary issues, where these problems are starting? Where, what are we doing to get mental health resources in there at an earlier age to support our students so that they don't boil up and blow up at the high school level? We can slap a Band-Aid on it at the high school, which is what we've been doing the last two weeks. It's a Band-Aid to a systemic problem. And it's going to continue to boil up and escalate and be bigger and bigger until we address it at the elementary level, at the middle school level, so that when our students get here as starting to become independent, autonomous human beings, which is what we hope for, they have the capacity to make decisions and respond appropriately to situations. And, um, one other thing I'd like to address is the locker situation here at the high school. You put on there about banning backpacks. At the beginning of the school year, you sent emails to every one of your students asking them to give up their locker if they weren't using it because we don't have enough in this school district. We can't have both. We've got to have the equipment to serve our students if we want to do something. So it's an unrealistic ask to go backpackless in this school if we don't have enough lockers for our students. Second, the locker commons is a major problem, so my child uses his backpack to avoid the locker commons, so that he's not involved in the chaos. He's a straight A student. He busts his butt here, he keeps his head down because he doesn't want to get involved in the chaos. You got to have solutions for those things before you just say, "No backpacks." You know, and I know it was a survey, I know it was, and so I'm just putting my opinion out there on it. We can't have it both, both ways. And I do agree that as a communication strategy, we need to look for some other forums to have communications within this district. I think a great model was what the mayor did with the listening session and having some back and forth and some responses there. We don't have that. And it feels like comments fall on deaf ears because of the format that we have here. So we either need to change the agenda or add additional forums to have communications, you know? I'm new to this community, I've been here since, just since two thousand nineteen, so it's my first major election. I voted for everybody that got elected in this last election. And I want you all to succeed because I want my kids to succeed, I want this community to succeed. I'm not out here to point fingers or get anybody. And I think that's the point our parent was making previously, is that we don't expect you all to have the solution. There's a lot of great minds in this community that would like to put input in, like the school safety council, a suggestion of adding a committee like that, like, there's a lot of resources in this community and there's a lot of things that we could do that aren't necessarily punitive in structure to provide safety and, and resources to our students. You know, I'm not, I am not for a resource officer in this district, I don't think that provides safety. What it does is it provides compliance through the threat of force, and that does not build community. What it does is it gets kids to comply for a short period of time until it escalates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Next, we have Yasmina Burawi, followed by Nell Kunminch.
Good evening, um, I'm Yasmina Burawi. I know most of you personally, a few of you I don't. Congratulations to all of you, uh, for your service, thank you. And congratulations to the four of you there who have new positions. I don't envy any of you, having served in that seat before. Um, I just want to make a couple, um, observations. One is that this community has turmoil going on right now here at, um, East Lansing Public Schools and at the high school in particular, and also at East Lansing Public Library. They're both really related to the treatment of students of color. East Lansing High School was widely criticized at the last meeting for lack of discipline and follow-through related to discipline issues. And the library leadership is being criticized for follow-through related to discipline. So what the hell does this community want? Okay? We're, we're, we're putting people on stakes at the head of both of these institutions and they can't do anything right. So I, I, I'm, I feel sorry for the community. I want to observe that these issues are related, that both of these issues are related as the lack of programming options for students who aren't in scheduled after-school activities has been a problem for years. And it's kind of been dumped on the library and they're trying to figure out how to, how to deal with that problem. All right, fast forward now to, uh, here at the, at the schools. We know that our data indicates that our black and brown students need more support, more understanding and attention. Without critical focused intention to meet their needs, many will be unsuccessful in school. A focus on creating a more inclusive and supportive environment is essential to creating a school system that all students can thrive and find success. If many of our black, brown, and low socioeconomic students are struggling to achieve academically in our current system, then our teachers and staff and our community must understand the systemic reasons behind this lack of achievement and develop new practices that will help all of our students to achieve at a high level. So this is community, school, library, together. We can't work in silos. I know that the district is asked to make school improvement plan goals, and I know that they're currently being asked to make a, a, a goal for the whole district. And this new framework that MD's put out focuses on a district goal, which then the schools align activities to support. I can't find that goal on the website, and the goals that I'm finding on the website are from two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So I'd ask that we find a way to update those on the website. But, um, they've, the districts have been asked to make a SMARTY goal. A SMARTY goal is strategic, measurable, ambitious, realistic, time-bound, inclusive, and equitable. And that is, um, in doing that, that incorporates equity and inclusion components, and it also makes a commitment to racial equity and inclusion that's anchored by tangible and actionable steps. So I happen to know that the district last year had been contemplating a SMARTY goal, I don't know if it was adopted, um, that had to do with improving the student achievement and sense of belonging for our, uh, black, brown, and low socioeconomic students that would be implemented in a district-wide manner, focused on culturally responsive instruction and a deep understanding of the systemic racism and poverty. And that, that draft had goals that were something like this. By two thousand twenty-seven, at least seventy percent of our black, brown, and low socioeconomic students would be proficient in reading, and sixty percent or more would be proficient in mathematics as measured by benchmark assessments. In addition, at least eighty percent would report feeling a sense of belonging and that their school was a safe, inclusive, and valued, valued their contribution as a member of our community. That ties back exactly to some of these behavioral issues that we're talking about. So I'd ask the superintendent and the administrative leadership if, if you could bring that back in a public way, what our SMARTY goal is that's been, that we've put forward as a district. And, um, if it- And if it is, in fact, what I read, I think that would be a very powerful goal that makes the connection that social justice is foundational to academic achievement, and I'd be very interested in the measures that would be used to measure belongingness. This is the important psychological safety work. This is another important entry point as the majority of measures listed in the safety presentation addresses physical safety. Okay, so we're going to have the safety presentation, and we'll see if it measures emotional safety. And if not, maybe we want to consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barawi. Ms. Kuhnmanch, please. And then we have... Sorry, I'm losing my... Darrellin Moore.
Thank you. Madam President, Trustees of the Board of Education, Superintendent LaCo. I want to just recognize that this is a very tumultuous time, both in our district, but also in our state, our country and our world. It is a very, very difficult time to sit in the seats that you occupy. Those who have been brave enough to run for public office and been elected and are serving, regardless of our agreements or our disagreements, you are serving with a commitment to making things better. And every person who's come before you comes with that commitment and that sense of wanting to do right. This is something that a former president of the United States has been quoted as saying in the past, and it is not to diminish anything that has been said here at any time. It is simply to try to offer you, in the words of former President Theodore Roosevelt, some sense of the recognition of the very, very difficult positions that you, as elected officials, have put yourselves in. And I will add also that many of our public servants also put themselves in. And I quote, "It is not the critic who counts, not the person who points out how the strong one stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the individual who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who earns, but who come... And who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcomings. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends themselves in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if they fail, at least fail while daring greatly, so that their place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Unquote. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhnmanch. Next we have Darrellin Moore, followed by Jared Roberts.
Good evening, and I'm going to piggyback off of Ms. Caitlin Thomas. I am the family and the son of who her letter is regarding. On February 6, I had got a phone call from the assistant principal at McDonald regarding of my continuation form being discontinued... Denied. I had emailed the assistant principal and the main principal, as well as superintendent Dory LaCo. I did not get a response. I then called, I had requests for an in-person meeting. He said that he's... The assistant principal stated that he was going to have a meeting, sit down with the superintendent, and then that I could get my in-person meeting the next day. I never did. He then called me back and said that they sat up all night and decided to keep my son My oldest son, 17 years old, was murdered last year. JD left school with a brother. He came home to no brother. It was a rough time. The saying is, everybody says it takes a community. I do believe in that. And the community, East Lansing, has helped JD very, very much. But I think the part that is baffling to me is when they stated... The principal stated she sat up all night and that I was told, "We understand" last What you went through, but basically this year should be better. You will never get over watching a casket close on your child and a sibling having to see that. JD has IEP. It is only four months left in the school. He grew to trust Ms. Thomas, Mr. Scott. He already has a hard time trusting. So our move was temporary, because after the loss of my son, we found out the house we were in was getting sold and we literally had two weeks to move home. So where we live at now is the borderline of East Lansing and Haslip. I don't want to put him in Haslip because that's a temporary move. We're going to be back in East Lansing, we're looking in the process of a house. JD's been home all week and he's confused. He stated to me, "Mom, why would they do that to me? I thought they liked me, I thought they were here to help." And I got nowhere. I do understand the y'all rules, I do get it. Also, I asked for the rule to be considered not to split siblings up because Principal Shane at White Hills kept my daughter. So she's still in East Lansing, but now JD's sitting at home, not no school. And the IEP already had took East Lansing three weeks when they did come, when we did move in the district two years ago. So I just feel like the IEP at a different school with only four months left, it's going to take a minute for them to go over. He did very well. I thank... I thank East Lansing because you guys are the reason why. He's dealing with what he's dealing with, but JD now has As and Bs. And I thank you, Ms. Thomas. Because you guys gave... Like, I just feel like it was a smack in his face. And I get the continuation, I do, but it's a temporary move. I just come here tonight to please let him come back to McDonald. And I do get that they stated the two rules are suspensions of assault. Or... I'm sorry, my mind. But the last suspension in November, that... He went off of rumors stating JD said something to a teacher, which one of his teachers is a witness to the ending saying JD never said that. I... The assistant principal called me suspending JD before even knowing that part. When he called me, he was assuming. Then he literally called me three minutes later saying, "Oh, well, I'm going to keep the suspension in play because I was told JD said something to a teacher. And so I'm going to put that under the assault thing, whatever." I'm sorry, I can't think right now. And last year JD got done in May to a situation of altercation with a little girl. We decided, me and the two principals, to remove JD. I felt some type of way about that because the little girl never got that on her record. She hit my son three times with a lacrosse stick before he did this, and he hit, busted her lip. She called her older brothers, 17, 19 and 21, up to McDonald's Middle School. So we decided to move JD in May, he was done, because I know you guys can't patrol the parking lot. That are the two things on JD's record. He's never attacked, fought, never been in a group of anything. I just ask that you guys take that into consideration because this is destroying my son right now and we're still trying to figure out how to grieve on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next we have Jared Roberts, followed by Alice Drager.
Hello, I'm Jared Roberts. Thank you for having me. We have a 7th grader at McDonald. Ironically, in 2006, we chose East Lansing when we had every suburban option available to us for a place to live because of the schools. Because at the time, it was the best school in town and it had many of the things that we were looking for in terms of, you know, the high quality of education. This was once a district where it had the best teachers and teachers I think would aspire to get a job here. I think the school district used to punch above its weight class in terms of the quality of the educators that came to it. But I show up to these meetings the last couple weeks and I see educators that are in despair. A district that is in freefall by every objective measure. Freefall, absolutely no doubt about it. And there's some questions as to why this is happening. The discipline has been a disaster, and I applaud the board for finally trying to turn the corner on that. And so I urge you, stand tough. You will hear from people, my neighbors, some of them my acquaintances, who will complain about the fact that all of a sudden, we are being disciplined and all of a sudden, there are consequences for actions. But it's high time, so don't back away from the moves that you're making now, as difficult as they are, and as tough as they can be on a case-by-case basis. I think the people in this community have been speaking to that, and I'm glad there is finally some movement on that issue. But what I'm really here in support of is the idea of resource officers in school. A loud and proud vote to implement that. In essence, I mean, there's overwhelming support for that in your survey, and I am sure the academics will say, "Small sample size," and it's a self-selecting survey and there'll be 101 statistical reasons why you might challenge it. However, I think you need to honor the people that showed up and filled that out, students that showed up and filled that out. Who cares if the turnout rate was way lower than it should have been? My family, I filled one out for my family, and so the fact that 70% of us, including your faculty, including your students, give or take one, a resource officer back in the schools, is something that you should take very seriously. And then, you know, really as I look at these problems and have given it some thought before just coming up here seeking to ramble on about one thing or the other, we really have two sets of problems as I see it. There's the micro-discipline scuffles, the, you know, the student-on-student events, the fights, and there's been some history in the school where members of this board did not like the fact that a resource officer was involved in these kind of micro struggles. And I think the solution to that is easy. Just govern the mission of that officer. I don't want a police officer in there necessarily to, you know, jump in when somebody's hair is getting pulled. That's not it at all. That is not it remotely. The reason why people in this community, at least in my family, are interested in getting resource officers back in school is the cataclysmic, violent, outside shooter type of events. And you probably all got to scoff and say, "Well, that doesn't happen, that's statistically so insignificant." Except in the last couple weeks, kids showed up at school with a gun, right? And in 1999 was the Columbine event. And now, 23, 24 years later, you're finally figuring out that you need to count the doors? 23 years later, you figured out doors? You know, I'm glad you're starting to figure out doors, I'm glad you're going to hire somebody to look at the doors, but really, every other school just about in the world has a common entrance point, and they have somebody paying attention to it. And so if people are saying, "Well, we can't have a resource officer in the school," again because of these micro concerns, I really wish, you know, you think of it this two ways. If it's the issue of, "We don't want people to have hurt feelings or rumpled feathers or have their pristine school experience colored by the fact that they, oh my gosh, may see a police officer in the school," then you just simply govern the mission of that police officer. My family has spoken to people in the East Lansing Police and they've expressed for years willingness to return and willingness to conform their mission to what this district thinks it needs. So again, I don't think somebody needs to be arrested for typical kid stuff or somebody vaping in the bathroom or pulling their hair, but we also have... We also have some threats of quite serious violence issues. And if there is time remaining, I was just getting started, I would like to return.
Your time has expired, sir.
I understand. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next we have Alice Drager, followed by Mark Cowley.
I wasn't planning to speak, but when you got to the point of your agenda where you had a consent agenda with no opportunity for anybody on the board to pull the item off the consent agenda for discussion, I realized I had to say something finally. Many people know I am the founder and publisher of East Lansing Info. We are a nonpartisan organization specifically dedicated to supporting information for this community, to functioning as an information safety network. The people of Michigan have rights. They have rights, for example, under the Open Meetings Act. And these rights entitle them to have government performed in front of their eyes, so that they can know what their elected officials are doing, they can know how decisions are being made and why decisions are being made. When you have something on a consent agenda, I find myself curious to know who put it on the consent agenda such that no member of the board can discuss it. For that to happen, there must have been a decision made behind closed doors to put it on the consent agenda in such a way that the president then announces there will be no discussion. At East Lansing City Council and most of East Lansing government, consent agendas function in a normal fashion, which is, they're voted through as a block because they're considered uncontroversial items. However, if anybody on the organization that is elected wants to pull it off and discuss it, they can do so. I'm pretty sure I understand why this item was on the consent agenda without discussion, but I will have to ask board members afterwards if my theory is correct. Decisions are being made by this board behind closed doors, for example, who will be on what committee. I don't see that coming before the group for discussion and votes. With every other elected group, these kinds of things are done through votes. Your attorney has warned you, I was informed, to stop violating the Open Meetings Act. But what I would ask for is more than simply your attorney warning you. You have been elected by the people of this district, and what transparency looks like is a fundamental commitment to transparency. What I don't like is things like when I ask a board member for a response to a particular story and I get a text like this from Kath Edsel, "Off the record, in case you haven't seen my email reply, the board speaks through its minutes and its motions." Really? So the board speaks through its minutes and its motions, but when are those decisions being made? Because time and again, what we see is not the ability of the people here to find out how you're making decisions and for the decisions to be made in public. What we find is things simply presented and voted through. Minutes are incredibly thin in this school district. If you go to look at policy or you go to look at the school board meetings, the minutes are so thin as to be almost meaningless. There is out-of-date information all over this district's website, as been reported time and again by people in the district. The Mental Health Advisory Committee meeting is missing most of its minutes. Information is up there from 2008 and 2019. If the district doesn't have the capacity to provide up-to-date, meaningful information, then it needs to spend money on that. You are a government, and the government needs to tell the people what is going on and what the records are. There are committee meetings that are held typically during the day in a school district. The reason the city of East Lansing holds its meetings chiefly at night is so that most people can participate. How many parents can participate in committee meetings? How many voters and taxpayers can participate in committee meetings that are held during the day? Agendas are posted incredibly late and they are vague. Minutes, again, incredibly vague. Try finding videos of the school board's meetings. I have a PhD and I'm really good at searching because I run a news organization. I struggle every time I'm trying to find a video. I can find the high school basketball games, I cannot find the school board meetings. And it is not for want of asking. For years, I have asked that the videos be linked to the minutes so that it is very easy for any parent or any taxpayer or any voter to simply click on the video and find it, rather than struggling through what is a sports website. Can this district not afford a dedicated website for its school board meetings? Do we really have to do it through a sports agency? It is a government funded by taxpayer dollars and the people of... It is a government funded by taxpayer dollars, and the people of this district have the right to transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Drager. Next, we have Mark Colley, followed by Carrie Roberts and Juliana Feliciano. I'll call this last call, if anybody else wants to fill out a blue form.
Hello. Hello, my name's Mark Colley. I was a long-term sub here in 2021, and I was working with some of the behavioral challenge kids. I was drawn to that. When I first entered college, I thought I wanted to be a world-renowned English professor, blah, blah, blah. And then I started substitute teaching while I was finishing school, had no intention ever working with K through 12 kids. And what I found was, I was drawn working, to working with kids who were struggling. I struggled. I was, I graduated second to last in my high school class. I was suspended. I was paddled. I joke about it now. But what I want to talk about are solutions. I do have plenty of ideas about, you know, you've heard over the past couple of months, I do have concerns about the, some of the theoretical approaches towards fixing these solutions. However, I want to talk about human resource solutions. Sadly, I'm not that solution. I wish I had the solutions for everyone, but I want to be part of that solution. And I think that solution is somewhere between what the Caitlin Thomas, first time I've heard her speak was tonight, but from those behavioral approaches and the connections she made with J.D.'s mother. I, I never heard of J.D. till tonight, but I love hearing about those connections. And as a, why I felt like I was drawn to working with challenge kids is, you know, like also what other people said, it takes a village. I'm on my sixth, I think. I have a lot of people that have had a lot of patience, but, so working with challenge kids and trying to develop those authentic connections. Some on the board might have seen me work as a long-term sub, and, and probably seen most of my foibles, because I do not have training in this arena. But in terms of, if this position does not exist, I, and as you work towards solutions, if there's something where, there's like a, because I, 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 while I was a sub in 2021, I finally finished my college degree after 25 years. And, thank you. And what I didn't get is a teacher certification. I did try to spin it at the end, but I only had two more classes, and teaching was two more years. But what I would like to do, if there is something along the lines of a student advocate, behavioral interventionist, on the alternative track for teaching, maybe there, and, and a liaison to the community, because I was bouncing around. I think, again, somewhat, the solution is somewhere between Caitlin, Caitlin's view and people like Terrence, Pastor Terrence Edmonds, who spoke, because he has a lot more real-world experience, where kids who are challenged often might connect with people with better world, world experiences rather than academics. But I think both need to be part of the solution. So if there, as you explore human resource solutions, I would like to be at least in the conversation, or part of workshop solutions, to create a situation where it's not just a student advocate, but someone who's also part of the system that's trying to build that community, to try to build that trust, where kids can have the authentic connection, find that, see that personal investment from an academic, to a financial, to a personal level, and to be a resource to talk to people in the community. Like Ms. Brooks, I've seen you speak twice now. I really enjoyed it, many people. But to, to develop those authentic connections, if you don't have that person, I would like to explore that with you, audition, and even if I fail, continue to work on how those, those connections are developed, because part of that is having patience, authentic connection, and not judging these kids. Because some of my biggest mistakes were, I didn't realize I was being bad, and if a teacher had made it personal, they had an eternal enemy. But if they didn't make it personal, and they showed consistency, I learned to trust that. And it was, and I, I broke a lot of people's patience, but I do have the patience to work with these kids, whether they can connect with me, or I can put them in, in the position to connect with other people that they can find to trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. And I want to apologize for our little back and forth up here. We received an MSU alert, which I believe Superintendent Laco was getting more information about, but we're waiting for more information. Okay. And we'll move on with the next public comment while we wait for that additional information. Carrie Roberts, speaking about code of conduct and consequences.
Yeah, hi there. So I spoke two weeks ago as well, and thank you so much to Ms. Laco, Tally, for your heartfelt responses to the very long parent-led survey that we sent all of the results to you. I know that it was an insanely long document. Hopefully, you've had at least some bit of a chance to look over those results. But what I really think is missing so far is, we're still really looking at these issues 30,000 feet in the air. I started talking to my son a little bit about, you know, the rules in the middle school, what we have in the high school. I delved into the East Lansing website a lot this week to look what's out there, the policy documents, what's available for students and parents. I mean, we've heard from quite a few parents that nothing is really set in stone. And when I pulled up the, the student handbook, the 85-page student handbook, and I know that we've talked about this before, and I hope that something about it is on when we talk about the safety plan later, but my initial reaction is, the likelihood of any parent, or any student in this district who have ever clicked on that link, who have ever talked about it in a classroom, who have ever signed something as far as a code of conduct is concerned, is probably slim to none if they're looking at 85 pages full of legalese document. So I started thinking a little bit about how families are run, right? So how do we do things at home, and how can we expand a little bit bigger? My initial reaction, as I started looking at the areas of your survey that you posted out, is that we're talking about, I'm giving the cell phone policy as the one big example, right? So we have a broad, do we limit cell phones? Do we let kids have cell phones? Well-
Ms. Roberts, I'm going to ask you, I'm very sorry, but we have an update about the MSU alert that was just issued, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Laco.
We just right now need to remain in here, and we're going to go into lockdown and secure the building. No one should leave right now. So I'm going to step out and make sure we're secure everywhere else, and see who else we have in the building. We've been advised by E.L.P.D. to remain here and go into lockdown right now.
Can you confirm that the issue is at Michigan State University, not an issue here?
Correct.
Can you confirm? Okay.
I can read you the MSU alert that I just received, which is today at 8:32 PM. MSU police report shots fired incident occurring on or near East Lansing campus. Secure in place immediately. Run, hide, fight. Run means evacuate away from danger if you can do so safely. Hide means to secure in place, and fight means protect yourself if no other option. Monitor alert.msu.edu for information. Reply with yes to confirm receipt. And then there's also a link included. We'll just take a brief recess as we try to figure out, and I'm seeing many people in the audience too needing to make arrangements. We'll just take a brief five-minute recess. So we'll, we'll check back in at 8:44.
I have a little update I do want to share. We're still in lockdown, but E.L.P.D. is going to be sending someone over here shortly, and they will be in communication directly with the folks at MSU. And if there's an opportunity at that time with police presence here, they will help get us out of the building, get to car, get to vehicles to leave, if they deem it's safe for us to do so. So we expect them to be here within about 10 to 15 minutes, so I just want to kind of keep you informed. And if they deem it's safe to go out of lockdown, we'll come back in and get everybody out. And if you haven't gotten the message yet, you should be getting a robocall any second that we're going to not hold school tomorrow, just so that we can better identify the impact of supporting our kids the next day, and also provide them time with their families
For purposes of procedure, adjourn the school board meeting, so the live feed can go off at a 10:11.